All right, good morning, everyone. We will now start the January 2nd, 2024 City Council meeting. Please call roll.
Garza?
Here.
Goss?
Here.
Fast?
Here.
Richardson?
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Our prayer?
Looks like we have Pastor Peterson. Lead us in prayer, please.
Since you asked me to, I sure will. Let's pray. Father, we just thank you this day. We thank you, Lord God, for a new year. And Father, we thank you for so many things that need to be changed, probably. Father, we just thank you for the leadership. We thank you, Lord God, for the leadership in the working committee. We just thank you, Lord God, stir their hearts, help them to become better leaders. And Father, we just thank you for the council members. We thank you, Lord God, as they are in the leadership role, that, Father, they have a heart to listen to what you say. Not so much what man says, but, Father God, what you speak to their hearts. And I just thank you for the city management, Lord God. As new city manager comes in, we just thank you for them. We thank you, Lord God, that we pray for them, that, Father, they'll have the, have a heart to make Reno County, make city, the city of Hutchinson, make them better than ever before. And I just thank you. I know that we have the great potential, but I thank you, Father God, for the unity that comes together in this city today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is swearing in Scott Mengers as a new council member for the Northeast District. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Scott Mengers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Kansas.
Of the State of Kansas.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Hutchinson.
Of the city of Hutchinson.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Perform the duties of council member.
Perform the duties of council member.
For the city of Hutchinson.
For the city of Hutchinson.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Scott, you ready for the next item?
Yes, sir.
All right, next item, please.
The next item is the election of the mayor.
All right, do we have any nominations?
I nominate Mr. Fast, Mayor, Mayor Fast.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Other than someone from Greg, something from Greg?
What can I say?
Nothing.
Nothing.
All right, please call roll.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Mengers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Epstein.
May I please swear you in?
Sure.
Go swear, please.
Please, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Greg Fast.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Kansas.
Of the State of Kansas.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Hutchinson.
Of the city of Hutchinson.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
For the city of Hutchinson.
For the city of Hutchinson.
So help me, God.
So help me, God. Thank you.
That was quick, John.
Efficient.
Next item, please, Karen.
Election of the vice mayor.
We have any nominations?
I nominate Stacy Goss.
I will second that.
Any comments, Stacy? All right, call the roll, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Mengers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
May I please swear you in?
Sure.
Go swear, please.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Greg Fast.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Kansas.
Of the State of Kansas.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Hutchinson.
Of the city of Hutchinson.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
For the city of Hutchinson.
For the city of Hutchinson.
So help me, God.
So help me, God. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item 7A is oral communications from the audience.
I don't see anybody new that might want to speak, but if there's somebody out there, feel free to come and state your name and your address and say what you want to say, and limit it to five minutes. Hearing done. Next item?
Item 8A through E is the consent agenda.
Any questions, concerns, clarifications? Anybody?
I would move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
I second that.
Call the roll, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Mengers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Item 9A is a public hearing for a vacation of a platted alley. If we could open the public hearing with a motion.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Mengers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Item 9A is a public hearing for a vacation of a platted alley. If we could open the public hearing with a motion.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Mengers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Item 9A is a public hearing for a vacation of a platted alley. If we could open the public hearing with a motion.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Mengers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Epstein.
May I please swear you in?
Sure.
Go swear, please.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Greg Fast.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Kansas.
Of the State of Kansas.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Hutchinson.
Of the city of Hutchinson.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
For the city of Hutchinson.
For the city of Hutchinson.
So help me, God.
So help me, God. Thank you.
John? Please.
That was quick, John.
Efficient.
Next item, please, Karen.
Election of the vice mayor.
We have any nominations?
I nominate Stacy Goss.
I will second that.
Any comments, Stacy? Goss? All right, call the roll, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Mengers?
Yes.
Goss?
Epstein.
Fast?
Yes.
We have any nominations?
I nominate Stacy Goss.
I will second that.
Any comments, Stacy? Goss? All right, call the roll, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Mengers?
Yes.
Goss?
Epstein.
Fast?
Yes.
May I please swear you in? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Stacy Goss.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Kansas.
Of the State of Kansas.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Hutchinson.
Of the city of Hutchinson.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of vice mayor.
The duties of vice mayor.
For the city of Hutchinson.
For the city of Hutchinson.
So help me, God.
So help me, God. Congratulations.
Next item, please.
Item 7A is oral communications from the audience.
I don't see anybody new that might want to speak, but if there's somebody out there, feel free to come and state your name and your address and say what you want to say, and limit it to five minutes. Hearing done. Next item?
Item 8A through E is the consent agenda.
Any questions, concerns, clarifications? Anybody?
I would move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
I second that.
Call the roll, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Mengers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Item 9A is a public hearing for a vacation of a platted alley. If we could open the public hearing with a motion.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Mengers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Anybody here to speak to that?
It's me. Hang on a second.
Okay.
Sorry for the, for the delay.
What kind of meaning are you running here, Mayor?
Yeah.
I think it's a setup.
That's why they don't let me do these things. All right. This is a vacation, and there'll be some, and there they come. We're vacating a platted but unbuilt alley. If you look there on that, that first image, you'll see East Sherman and Grand Street. Those streets are not built. They're platted, but they're not built. Oh, and they're helping me out. Look at, thank you, IT. And the portion of the platted alley, it's not built either, is between the kind of Aqua Square there and to the left of that, it's got the, the number for the county, the Camden number. It's the alley between those two lots. Those are both owned by Hutch Metal Recycling, and that's the portion they wish to, to vacate. And here's the larger picture. They, they own both of those parcels and also their businesses to the left there, to the west across North Superior. And you can see how it all lays out there. Really no other areas out there that it impacts. You can see the ADM elevator to the, to the east over there on Halsted. The parcels to the north of those two, Hutch Metal Recycling, parcels are owned by the same business, so they still have access, because they can drive right across it. They own both. And the, and I've included in the proposed ordinance a section of the statute about retaining all easements, which recover utility easements for the city and others. That's part of the statutes. It's mandatory so that we don't isolate anything that can't, can't access it anymore. But they're just asking that that platted but unbuilt alley be, be vacated. Any questions that the council or anyone else might have?
Is there any intent to build something there at this time?
I don't, I don't know what they're going to do with the property there, but it, it surely makes it easier for them to do whatever they please.
Didn't we discuss this when they purchased the property? Did we rezone it? It seemed like we talked about an alley and vacation.
Good. Here comes Jim Sineader.
Vacating an alley. I'm just curious why we're doing it now, if we talked about it then.
Good morning. Yes, we did talk about their plans are to fence that area in and make it part of the operation to where people would drop things off, metal and stuff like that. And so they plan on putting a really nice metal fence around the property and then receive their incoming stuff and then move it from there.
Thanks. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I so move.
What?
Oh.
Anybody from the audience want to speak to this? Motion to close the public hearing?
I so move.
I'll second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Mengers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
And now we'd ask for a, a motion and, and second to approve the actual ordinance.
I move to approve an ordinance ordering vacation of an alley at 7 North Superior, Grandview Addition to the city of Hutchinson, Kansas.
Oh, go ahead. I second that.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Mengers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Item 10A is to consider the ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
Good morning. My name's Brian Clennan. I'm the Director of Public Works. In 2021, the EPA revised the lead and copper rule due to lead issues in Flint, Michigan, with the primary goal of protecting public health, especially child development. The, the revised rule requires that the city create an inventory of all service lines to identify the presence of lead service lines and also to develop a lead service line replacement plan. And both of these tasks need to be done on both the public side, which is from the water main to the meter, and on the private side, which is from the main to the foundation of the house. Or, I'm sorry, from the meter to the foundation of the house. And in an effort to assist cities, KDHE has developed a spreadsheet of the required data that the EPA is requiring that we collect, just to make sure all the communities are collecting that, that right data. And I've listed in the memo just a few of those things. I'll go over just briefly. We need to identify the water main material, the, the service line material on both that public side and the private side. And on the private side, we need to identify the, the material of that service line at the foundation of the house. We also need to identify the service line sizes. We need to identify whether that public service line, if it had been replaced, if it had ever been led prior to its replacements. Need to look at trying to document as best we can the plumbing materials within each building and the, the date that that plumbing was installed. So our city has approximately 15,950 service lines, and the completed spreadsheet is due to KDHE by October 16th of 2024. Back on May 16th, 2023, the city held a public hearing to discuss taking a $350,000 loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund that's administered by KDHE. This loan is intended to finance this work. So following the conclusion of that public hearing, the council authorized the mayor to sign a resolution authorizing the completion of that loan application. And KDHE has approved our loan application with the following terms. Loan amount is $350,000. There's an estimated principal forgiveness of $171,500, which leaves a net loan that we'll need to repay of $178,500. Got an interest rate at 2.26%, and it's for a 20-year period. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
That is a fixed interest rate?
Yes.
And just for clarification, this is a federal mandate that we're expected to do and pay for. It sounds like it's going to cost us $178,000?
That's right.
And the funds are used to create the inventory, not to then turn around and do repairs, right?
That's correct.
So, and I know that our hands are tied on this. I just, I don't like the situation that this creates for homeowners and property owners because once you're told that you have lead pipes, you then know you have lead pipes and you ultimately get to live with it or fix it. And it sounds like there's going to be some mechanism of enforcement to make the repairs. And that, that's going to fall on the homeowners or on the utility. And if the utility makes the repair, then the cost is essentially passed back to the, to the rest of us, to everybody as a whole. So, you know, it's darned if you do, darned if you don't type of a situation. And I don't like it, but I know we have to do it. I am glad that we are able to use these funds. I'm all for getting free money from the state or from the federal government or whoever. I just don't like the situation that I believe that we're kind of forcing property owners into. I know it's not your fault. You're just there to take my verbal lashing.
Is there any money out there to help homeowners with some of that cost if they have to replace their lines?
So, yeah, that's part of the scope of services for our consultants that we're hiring to help us through this is to identify opportunities for funding to implement that, that replacement plan. So we'll be developing a replacement plan once we have a better feel for how much lead might be out there that needs, that's required to be replaced, then developing a, a plan that we can implement over time. And KDHE, through the same loan, has a similar program for the replacements where they'll forgive 49% of that loan to help assist communities to replace the, the service lines that are required to be replaced.
Brian, how much of that lead pipe are on the main lines that you know of? Any?
How, how many lead service lines do we have right now?
Right.
None that I'm aware of.
Okay.
That, that we have. But I'm sure that there are some. We, we did discover some. Richard, I should introduce Richard Bowler. He's our Superintendent of Water and Sewer Maintenance, and he'll be managing this project. And I think it was about three or four months ago, we did discover some lead service lines on the public side that we replaced. Once, as soon as we found it was lead, we replaced that and notified the property owners about that as well. So there is some lead out there, I'm, I'm sure. But the majority of our system, we feel, is not lead.
Good.
And I remember you gave us, this summer, you gave us, a part of your presentation initially was kind of the building code and when it changed and that sort of thing. So the prediction is that homes that were built after a certain date are kind of, the presumption is that there's absolutely not lead in there. So these are going to be, the homes that need to be inspected are going to be older buildings, older homes. And commercial properties also have to be inspected?
Yes.
Or inventoried?
Okay. And I believe that date was 1988.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate you answering some questions. I think we're just trying to push information out that the news media can pick up on so that water users can understand why their bills might be going up in the future. Certainly not something we had on our list of things to do. So, any other thoughts or questions?
So if they, once, if we pass this, how long, how long is this going to take for them, this consulting firm, to go through and analyze all of those pipes?
So, again, the spreadsheet's due to KDHE by October of this year, so we'll have the, our work done by October of this year. Now, we won't have every service line identified perfectly at that point in time. In fact, I'll get into the weeds just a, a little bit for you. In, this is the next agenda item with the consultants, but they've got in their budget to go out and physically pothole 100 service lines. And what we plan to do is, and they'll also be doing like a document review. You know, look at, talk to utility billing folks, talk to our building inspection folks, talk to some of our most senior water maintenance workers to kind of get a feel for any records that we have that can document the types of service lines. And we're going to put that into a model that will help us predict then the likelihood of lead, and that will help us identify where we want to spend that pothole money. And so we're going to have not 100% confidence that all of the service lines, but hopefully like a 80 to 90% confidence that we've got that, that service line. And so we'll be working with KDHE to make sure that we're, you know, clear about. clear about where we're at and when we fill out that spreadsheet, what confidence level that we've identified that.
Okay.
I got a question, sir. Now, once we find out that they have lead on their side, we're not going to force them to change it, or are we, in our inspection department?
You know, that's a great question, Steve. And those are things I'm still trying to completely understand as well. And again, we've hired an expert in this that will help lead us through that process. But I believe that the communities are going to be required to come up with a plan to replace those lead lines within a certain period of time.
Well, that's good. We need to, because like Stacy said, then that's going to really force the homeowner to put money in their house, whether they can afford it or not. That's why, okay, we'll discuss that when we get to that point. All right.
My thoughts are it's probably years and years down the road before we are forced to do something. I don't know, but.
Yeah, and could be sooner than later, though. From some of the information that I'm reading, like, I've seen something that potentially there's a 10-year window that these things are going to have to be implemented, so.
And if a person is concerned that they might have a lead connection at this time, what, what can they do to remedy it? Is there like, can you take your water in to get tested from your tap? Or as a homeowner right now, what can you do?
You could, yeah. You could send your water into a lab and have it tested.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I know you said in your last presentation that we've never failed our lead testing. We're always within the non-detectable limits for lead, correct?
That is correct.
At the public supply.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions on the loan portion of this discussion? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve an ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan agreement between the city of Hutchinson, Kansas and the state of Kansas, acting by and through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the purpose of obtaining a loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, for the purpose of financing a public water supply project, establishing a dedicated source of revenue for repayment of such loan, authorizing the approving certain documents in connection therewith, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the loan, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Makers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes. Next item.
Item 11A is to consider the state revolving loan fund loan agreement for the drinking water service line inventory required by the EPA.
All right, to help us complete the service line inventory and replacement plan, we plan to use that KDHE loan to hire an engineering firm. We did send out requests for qualifications to six engineering firms, and we received five qualification statements back. Three of those firms were brought in for interviews, and HDR was selected based on their project team, their previous experience on these types of projects, and just a good understanding of the project here and some of the things that we were interested in at the city of Hutchinson. The proposed agreement with HDR is an hourly not exceed contract in the amount of $312,955. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none? Stand for motion.
I move to approve the, oh wait, are we, we're on B? No.
No, A.
A, okay, thank you. I move to-
Verify that for you, council. Actually, the ordinance authorizes the execution of the loan agreement. 11A is that a loan agreement. So essentially, it's already taken care of. You can move on to 11B.
Okay, thank you. I move to approve agreement with HRD for professional services to assist the city in completing, oh, sorry, I was reading the wrong line. I had no coffee today. Move to approve the agreement with HDR for professional services in an hourly not to exceed contract in the amount of $312,955, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please, Ken.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Makers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes. That takes care of our agenda items. Next item?
Report of city officials.
Scott? Welcome.
Thanks.
You have some comments?
I sure do.
All right.
So first, I'd like to thank all the voters that came out and voted in the election to help me get elected for city council, and all the voters that came out in Reno County and everywhere else. It's very important that we get out and vote, so I appreciate that. I'm excited to start this new journey as a member of city council. And I think it's a great opportunity to contribute towards making Hutchinson an even better place to live and work. And then on January 15th, at 9 o'clock, on behalf of the Martin Luther King Junior Day Committee, I would like to personally invite everyone out to join in making a positive impact for the day of service to embrace the spirit of Martin Luther King Day. The event kicks off at Stringer Fine Arts Center, where we'll begin a brief program inspired by Dr. King's vision, followed by a breakfast. And then afterwards, volunteers will be assigned various sites, offering an opportunity to give back to the community and organizations alongside fellow Reno County citizens. And I really think this is a great event. This will be the, this will be the second time they've done it. They did it last year and had a pretty decent turnout. And I just think it'd be a great event for, to foster new connections and friendships among individuals from all corners of our community. So I'm going to be there personally, and I just think it's a great thing to get everybody involved in the community. So I invite y'all to join me.
Thanks, Scott. Welcome aboard. Glad you're here.
Thanks, glad to be here.
Stacy?
Oh, I have to go?
Garza?
Yes. I'd like to welcome Scott and Stacy and you, Mr. Mayor, to your positions. Good luck. I've been there. And to our ex-mayor, he did a fine job. I think he did a great job for us. And I thank you for your service. Other than that, on February 10th, I'm going to have one of my meetings, an open forum again, on February 10th at the Zone. Let me get this right, it's 8:02?
8:05.
8:05, I do that every time, you know. 8:05 at the Zone, that's 8:05 East B. Come there at 9 o'clock, go in the back, and we'll have chairs and coffee, and we'll sit down and have a talk. It seems to be working pretty good so far, so come out and join us. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
John?
Yeah, I just have one item. I would like to bring back up the discussion in regards to moving the city council meetings or figuring out something else in regards to what time they start. I would like to schedule a time for all of us to have that on an agenda item to discuss and see if we want to move forward or leave it the way it is. That's a request, if we can do that.
Can we just put that on the agenda for next time? Or the time after?
I know, I know it's unpopular, but it's worth chewing over.
I think it's one of the loose ends to tie up from last year and some of the conversations that have been had over the past couple of months.
Yeah. We need to have an official discussion about that and decide as a council what would be best for the community, so.
And I share everyone else's thoughts. It's not fair that you skip over Stacy when she doesn't want to speak in her turn.
No, I'm going to speak.
All right. Thank you, Stacy, and thank you, Greg, for stepping up and being mayor and vice mayor. I appreciate it. And Scott, stepping up and running for the election, that's a big deal. Looking forward to having five people up here. So that's all I have.
Are you ready now?
Yeah, yeah. Um, the past 11 days while we've been on break, that's when my kids got out of daycare. So like, a little bit frazzled, I've been home with the two little ones for a couple of days now, and this is the most adult conversation I've had, so thanks to everybody for that. I, I think that event-wise, I always kind of recap, you know, the events that I've attended. Event-wise over the past two weeks, it's been pretty quiet, but I've engaged in a lot of conversations with people about the downtown master plan, about sidewalks. And it seems like when it comes to the downtown master plan, a lot of people are looking at that and thinking like, oh, this is what we're doing now, this is where we're going. These are like our new initiatives. And I don't think that as a council, we've had time to really chew it over and like, think about it and look at it and see how it weighs with, you know, the next five years of CIP projects and funding and all of that. And I don't think that the council's ready to say, you know, this is 100% the direction we're going to. But an important point has been brought up with this council before, which is we pay these experts to tell us what to do, and then we don't listen to them. So I think that there's definitely going to be good nuggets in the downtown plan. Will all of it come to fruition? Probably not. I don't think that's the purpose of the plan. I think it's more to provide direction to us. So I think I just wanted to kind of get that on the record, that those are my feelings anyway about the master plan. And if anybody has anything else to add, by all means, please do. Other than that, the MLK Day celebrations, those will be great. I will be there with my Carhartts on. It's going to be cold, but it'll be, it'll be fun. And I think that kind of wraps up. Thanks to everybody who voted, and thanks for the nomination, I appreciate it.
Very good. Well, I guess it's my turn. John, thank you for your work. I believe the word you used was tumultuous here. I think the word was tumultuous.
I can't even spell it, but yeah, it sounds good.
You know, if we recap the last year with, you know, trying to replace a city manager, a police chief, some of the things that we had to do as a council, it was not easy. And you led us well, John, I appreciate that. I appreciate my council members having faith in me to move this city forward. I know that there's a lot of big things kind of behind the scenes going on. The downtown master plan is one. Industrial Park annexation is another. Many things that we can look forward to. I can tell you that two of my big things, I will continue to advocate for the airport. I know we have a new airport director that we've hired. I will continue to advocate tirelessly for downtown. So in reference to your comment about paying people to do things and then not listening, or, you know, we spend a lot of money. I was looking back through a REFTELA study that we paid somebody a whole bunch of money to do. And there are some things getting done on that list. I was just kind of double checking and thought, maybe we need to hold people accountable or whatever, and there are some things getting done on that list. So I think that sometimes when we spend that money, it is useful to us. So, anyway, again, thank you. Thanks for you guys having faith in me. Mary Grace, you have something?
I do, I have a few things here. First and foremost, I know I've mentioned and referenced it, but Matt Williams is our new Director of Community Development, and he is on property and here and started, so we're really excited to have him here, so welcome to Matt. I'd also like to thank the council for their work this year. I know it was a challenging year, and I sit here every session and I always thank the employees, but I think at this point, it's always good to say thank you to all of you because you are the ones, or the face of making the decisions and moving the community forward. So I do appreciate all your hard work this past year. I'd like to welcome Mr. Makers, and I'm glad you're here, and look forward to working with you. I look forward to the council continuing to do the work to set the priorities for the community and for our workers and our directors and for the city team. We are here ready to implement the changes and the focus that you see and set fit, that you want to see us work on to strive to continue to move the community forward. And we look forward and welcome that work. I also wanted to remind everyone, and specifically the council, that the Local Government Day for us in Topeka is going to be Wednesday, January 24th, and we have to register by the January 17th for that opportunity for us to maintain and to continue to communicate with our state. So I welcome that and work with the council. Mr. Makers, we'll work on getting you acclimated to meet the dynamic team that we have that continue to work hard for us every day at the city. And I thank you for the opportunity you gave me, and we'll continue to work to move the agendas forward for 2024. And Happy New Year to everybody.
Mr. Mayor, I got one thing to add real quick.
All right.
First thing, we have an art person coming to steal our pictures for us?
Yeah, it's a new year.
Okay. I was just wondering. And also, Mayor, I'd like to take this, I've been having calls about the ordinance thing we're going to do, we're going to get together and have a forum on that? We need to do that.
What ordinance?
To get something done on sound.
Oh, on the sound ordinance?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes.
One of the things that we want to do is, we want to, probably will be February to start timeframe. We want to set up some town halls to go out to the community, to listen to the community on different topics. We'll work with the council, come up the agenda, with the agenda that you feel, things that we've heard repeatedly about the ordinance. And again, it goes to the direction that you want our team to focus on for the 2024 year. And we want to make sure we have a complete list, get out into the community, and then hear what the community says. So that's our game plan, starting probably in February. We'll come up with a timeline.
Thank you.
Anyway, do I, anything else? I, I do want to say one other thing. You know, Garza always says this, you know, we all kind of like each other up here, and that is a very good thing. We don't always agree, but we like each other. And, you know, sometimes I even like Paul. Anyway. Unless there's anything else, we can, we can adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Makers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.